I'd like to welcome you to the May 14th, 2018 meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I would like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me to say the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
City Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plourd?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Here.
And Mayor Campana?
Here. Next we come to the agenda. I would like to make a change on this agenda. I would like to take item number one and move it to after three. We'll make it three A. If there's no other changes, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Commissioner Schlegel?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. That carries seven zero. Next we come to announcements. We've had some glitches with the rubbish drop-off this week. We started it up and it's not going as smooth as we'd like it. We will be working on this. We will get it corrected. And at the end of the meeting during Commissioner comments, City Manager comments, we will discuss it. Second item. Let's talk about boards and committees on the city. The city has about twenty boards and committees and authorities that are made up of resident volunteers. The committees exist to study and advise the city on areas of concern within the city. Couple of them that are in need of members is the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Harbor Advisory Committee. Because of term limits and turnovers, we are always regularly looking for citizens, residents of the city who are willing to volunteer a few hours each month to help make Marquette a better place. It's an opportunity to do something productive, meet some good people, and help make Marquette a better place. If you're at all interested in doing something like this, please contact any of the city commissioners, call the city manager's office, or go online. We depend on our residents to help out with the city. Next we come to appointments, boards and committee appointments. We're going to start off with appointments. We have Rob Baranek to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for an unexpired term ending two, one of twenty-one. Stephen Slavinsky to the Harbor Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending six, one of twenty. Someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we appoint the members as presented.
So there's a second. Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Discussion?
Just wanted to say thank you for serving.
Echo that.
Okay. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Carries seven zero. We have one reappointment tonight. It's Ellen Sherbinow to the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee for a term ending five thirty of twenty-one. Commissioner Smith?
I move that we appoint the member as presented.
So there's a second. Commissioner Plourd?
Second.
Discussion? Any comments?
Thanks again.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Carries seven zero. Next, I'd like to see Ellen, Mr. Ellen Sherbinow over at this podium. Ellen? Ellen has agreed to serve on, let me find it here, Traffic Parking Advisory Committee. Like other committees, a very important committee, and we appreciate you taking the time to volunteer to do this a few hours a month, and it's going to, you know, it helps make Marquette a better place. We appreciate you stepping up. I'm going to give you this pin. It's kind of like a volunteer pin. Wear it, and people will realize that you do things for the city. So we thank you very much. Appreciate you doing this. And you've already taken the oath. Care to say a few words?
Not really.
Okay, gotcha. Nobody does. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next we come to the first public comment of the evening. Public comments, the time when people can reserve time to speak on one of our upcoming items on tonight's agenda, or if you just have something you want to tell us about, now is your time. You've got three minutes at the front podium. We need your name and address. I'm an open public comment. Does anybody wish to make, to address the commission?
Good evening. Barry Polson, 101 North Lake Shore Boulevard. I am here to speak and answer questions on item number eleven, and also would like to reserve time for Jeff Katzen from HRS. And he flew in shortly ago, so he's on his way over, but...
His first name again?
Jeff Katzen from HRS, for the same item number eleven. Thank you.
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge. Marquette, to speak on items eight, C, and eleven. These are my opinions. April thirtieth, Mr. Plourd mistook my comment for a personal attack, even though I said it was not. It read, quote, "Mr. Plourd appears to listen, although I've wondered why he misinterpreted many of my comments a while back. Concerned is the promise he made over a year ago that he'd mentioned the concerns the constituents raised with him. It's impossible to imagine that very few mentioned anything we're sharing to him. This is in no way a personal attack against Mr. Plourd. The point is, our residents are apparently wasting this opportunity," end quote. He later launched a tirade against me. Over that? That's what I get for giving him the benefit of the doubt. The comment corresponds with Mr. Plourd's statement of November fourteen, two thousand sixteen, at thirty-seven minutes, twenty seconds, quote, "If people who email or telephone him can't make the meeting or do public comment, I'm more than happy to bring that up and make it known, and I think that's something that needs to be addressed," end quote. My comment was easily, clearly understandable, as heard on public record, just as written. When he says no one understands me, is he referring to my writing style, my viewpoints on reckless development, or my utter disrespect of this board? Mr. Plourd continues to gripe without providing the requested examples so we might better understand each other. No one understands me? How about the people, even strangers, who tell me to keep doing what I'm doing? Those who appreciate nature? Or the audience who applauded me even though I barely mentioned the condos they were here to oppose? The audience proved Mr. Plourd wrong even before he misspoke to the contrary mere minutes later. While I'd love to appeal to everyone, the big money circle can't stand the sight of me, and even some nature lovers don't prefer my direct style. In fact, I'm one of them, and I'm open to any suggestions. I'd prefer honey over vinegar. Our new members must realize that any mention of lake shore site strikes the chord with a lot of us after all the lies that mar our public record. We knew they were wrong, but nothing anyone said had a chance, not even the most eloquent speakers this chamber has ever heard. So don't give us this honey is sweeter than vinegar business. This board has a pitiful reputation on lake shore site as manifested by the hodgepodge we see there. Some current members possess the same mentality which exacerbated the fiascos there and at flounders, including Mr. Plourd. He's accused of disregarding the full context of my comments except for portions he can finagle cute responses around. We've recorded several examples of him using this sleazy style. April thirtieth, he asked what I'm here to accomplish. As my comments clearly attest, I'm here to promote responsible development and preservation, and to hold this board accountable in specific detail on record that anyone can review at will. If he'd listened objectively, he might just catch that drift. Remember, the record doesn't lie, and there's always a next meeting."
Anyone else? Would anyone else care to address the commission? Seeing none, we're going to close this portion of public comment. We're going to move to presentations. We have three tonight. The first is a proclamation concerning National Beach Safety Week. City Clerk, could you please give that to us?
Thank you, sir. City of Marquette, Michigan, Mayor's proclamation. Whereas the beautiful coastal and inland beaches of the city of Marquette represent a world-renowned recreational resource, and whereas the city residents and visitors alike are drawn to these beaches by the thousands each year for water and beach activities, and whereas the aquatic environment has dangers particularly rip tide, rip currents that can be effectively managed through public awareness and the vigilance of professional lifeguards, and whereas for reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the joys and hazards associated with the aquatic environment are appropriate at the commencement of the busy summer beach season, and whereas city residents and visitors alike must remember, learn to swim, swim near a lifeguard, swim with a buddy, check with the lifeguards, use sunscreen, and drink water, obey posted signs and flags, keep the beach and water clean, learn rip current safety, enter water feet first, and wear a life jacket. Now therefore, I, David J. Campana, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Marquette, do hereby proclaim May twenty-first to twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, as National Beach Safety Week throughout this community. I urge all residents and visitors using our beaches to enjoy themselves at the beach this year while taking appropriate measures to protect themselves and their children. David J. Campana, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioners, anybody wish to comment? I would just say we're doing this because Marquette's been really good about having water safety, being, having an awareness about this. Obviously, we've had drownings in the past. We are trying to avoid that. Our fire department, we had a task force that have been very active in preventing this, and we want people to know that Lake Superior is a very beautiful lake, but it's a very dangerous lake. So just be aware of it. And we'll probably be doing this every year, year after. We want to keep the awareness up. Next we have the second proclamation, which is the Public Works Recognition Week. City Clerk, could you give us that one also?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public work officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, David J. Campana, the mayor of the city of Marquette, do hereby proclaim May twenty to twenty-six, two thousand eighteen, as Public Works Recognition Week in the city of Marquette. I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Day of this fourteenth, day of May, two thousand eighteen. David J. Campana, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we're sending out an invitation to residents everywhere. In conjunction with Public Works Recognition Week, we are going to have an open house at the Municipal Service Center on Wright Street, across from the Northern Dormes. That will be Monday, May twenty-first, which is next week, from two to six. It's your opportunity to get in there and see the new building. We have made a few tours of the place. It is really kind of interesting and worthwhile seeing. A lot of residents have asked when they can see it. Hopefully, if you're one of them, next Monday from two to four. It's a beautiful building. It's new. You'll be impressed. Our third presentation of the evening is the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Chair Kerry Gottlieb is here. Kerry, if you'd take the podium to my right, please.
Good evening. I'm Kerry Gottlieb, and for the record, I am at 1076 South Lake Street. I don't know if that matters. I'm here as Parks and Rec Advisory Board chairperson. And as Mayor Campana said, our role is that to be advisory to you guys regarding the operation on the park system, Lakeview Arena, and recreation programs. We meet once a month, and currently we have nine members. I won't bother listing us all, but I would like to say that each of us tries to bring something to the table. I, as chairperson, also have an interest in silent sports. I'm also president of Nokeman on Trail Network, and so that will color this presentation tonight. We have other people who represent schools, community gardens. We have one guy who's into off-road vehicles. We have junior hockey. Somebody who represents the disabled. She works for sale. So we're pretty well-covered across the board. We would like to have somebody in youth sports, but we don't right now. Our staff liaisons are John Swenson over there, and Andrew McIver, who I don't think is here tonight. As you all know, we probably, or should know, we have about seven rentable facilities in Marquette, twenty-one different parks, including about twenty-eight hundred acres, a variety of outdoor athletic fields. Most importantly, we have eighteen point five miles of paved trail, multi-use trail. Used to be bike path, but now we're calling it multi-use. We have greater than forty miles of trails within the city limits, including the Hartwood, which is dirt trails. That does not include twenty-four miles of single track, which is groomed in the wintertime. We also have some groomed ski trails on the Noket Trail and the Fit Strip. We also have about seventy-two community gardens, but so we're kind of extensive. The purpose of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board has been up for the last couple of years has been trying to implement the two thousand eleven five-year master, Parks and Rec Master Plan. That was two thousand eleven it was approved. We're still working on that. So it's now turned into the eight-year plan. We are trying to also ensure that the recommendations that come from that are supported by the community and meet the city commission-approved policy goals. I am not going to go through this. I was limited to six minutes. This comes from our five-year plan in two thousand eleven. This was a list of our high and medium priority goals. Suffice to say, those that are colored in yellow are things that we have done. Those that are in pink or salmon are things that we're working on, and those in white are things that we haven't gotten to, mostly because we don't have the money. Again, not going to go into this one too close. This is our low and medium priority list. Lot more white here because it's low and medium priority. We just don't have the time or money to do everything we want. But what have we done? We did get, in the last year, we did get the Trails Use Master Plan approved by the city commission, you guys. Thank you very much. We've been working pretty hard on the Lighthouse Park development and redevelopments of Father Marquette, Williams, and Tourist Park. We have been working to update the Parks and Rec Master Plan for two thousand eighteen, possibly two thousand nineteen by the time we finish it. We have supported other new things like sled hockey at Lakeview Arena and developing the Dark Sky area at Prescott Isle. And a lot of our time has been spending, spent on policy reviews on private business use in city parks and e-bikes on city land and pathways. I see that's coming up again tonight later in this meeting, the private use in the city. Our biggest challenges, as you can tell, are going to be that related to money. Grant applications continue to be conservative due to limited means for fiscal matches, and you should all know better than I that their ongoing tax tribunal stress and unexpected drains on the general fund are limiting the money that you can spend on Parks and Rec, unfortunately. However, if you give me four point four million dollars, I will spend it on Parks and Rec very wisely. Other things that need to come up that were not addressed in two thousand eleven, the Lighthouse Park was, this is new, so this is going to be addressed in the next master plan. Chyris Park redevelopment, Tourist Park land use. We'd like to get Matson Park inclusive playground. And that's pretty much going to drive our goals for the upcoming year. A lot of it's going to be spent on the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which we will work with the ad hoc committee. Two of us from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board are on the ad hoc committee as well, myself and Ellen Weingard. She's president on secretary. So I'm sure we will be driving a lot of the issues there. We hope to evaluate and endorse ideas most important to the residents, define priorities for the master plan implementation, prioritize capital improvement investments, and identify areas needing development or revision of city policies. One of the other things that I think is going to be coming up fast on us is working with the city to basically relocate the multi-use bike path or multi-use paved path along Lake Shore Boulevard. We also need to continue to support tourist, Chyris, and Lighthouse Park renovations, and help drive the integration of Lighthouse Park into the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Less important, or less urgent, are additional policies or policies to be written on e-bikes, and supporting grants. Not that that's important. We just have less impact in that area. Discussions we need to have, paving of Lakeview Arena and other parking lots, bike path relocation, safety and crowding on the bike path, private use of public parks and how it affects the park system, and what can and should we do to preserve our public shoreline. And I know that'll come up later in this meeting again through other presentations. Our ultimate goals are help to determine the city's future recreational needs guided by the upcoming community survey and the two thousand eighteen or nineteen master plan, and help promote Marquette as a year-round destination with programs, special events, facilities, and trails. And that was forty-nine seconds too long, but I'm still going to do this anyway. I will entertain questions, but more importantly, the guy in the kayak is me, but not this year. Several years ago, we had ice on the bay this late. And the wonderful-looking woman on the paddleboard is my daughter. So I want to take credit for those.
Very good.
I built that kayak.
Good. Stay there a minute. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, we have any comments? Commissioner Schlegel?
Thanks for all the work that the Parks and Rec Board does. I love it. I think it's great. It's obviously one of the best parts of the Marquette community. Couple things just basically, when it comes to the master plan, I'm really excited about the consultant that you guys have to work on that. It should make things a ton easier for you. I went through the process with the planning commission with the city's master plan, and I would encourage you guys to really take that and create a living document as much as possible so that it's reviewed annually. I was really excited when we first started to make some notes saying, you know, here's something we might want to address when it comes time to review the city's master plan. Well, if it makes sense to do that for Parks and Rec, I would encourage you guys to do that if you find it of value. But it's just something to really keep things from getting bogged down to that five to seven to eight-year review time, you know. So it might be of value to you. And I think it's important that maybe we let the general public know when things, and maybe, John, this is your side of things, but when somebody is utilizing one of our parks and they're paying a fee for it, similar to like Prescott Isle Park Advisory, when that gazebo, or the, excuse me, I think either the gazebo and the grilling area there, pavilion, when those are used, those monies go back into those specific pieces, right? So, I mean, is that where the funds go that generally come in from other park usage, so that we can just let people know that, you know, this is part of what's going on?
Yeah, certainly. Any of the funds that we get from the rentals in that way go directly back into the park system. Prescott Isle is unique in that any time an alcohol permit is pulled for the pavilion, the only place where you can have alcohol. Those funds go directly back into a fund that is for renovations and maintenance and upkeep to that facility specifically. A lot of the other funds can be used elsewhere in the park system, but yeah, they go back in.
It's really important to know that when you pony up those speeds, that they do get pulled back in. I think it's important because of all the graduations that are going on and things like that, and it's great value to put back into the community.
Sadly, one of the most-used parks is the Linear Park, the multi-use park, and we get no money for that. People from all over Marquette and creation come here, and unfortunately, the most-used park doesn't draw in any extra cash. We're working on a way to figure that one out.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for all your hard work.
Anything else?
Mr. Frazier?
You guys do a great job. As a former member of Pye Pack, work with you guys a lot. Parks and Rec and everything works together. You do a great job. Like you said, there's possibly overcrowding on sidewalks. Our sidewalks, I walk them all the time, my dog. They are, sometimes they're not busy, sometimes they're very crowded. So I understand what you're saying. And as a walker, I know, and I have friends that are bikers, I know it's kind of like a, it's a bike path, not a walking path, but, you know, walkers take over the bike, and it's, so I've always thought about, I work with John, maybe something to look at is, I'm on the ad hoc committee, something I could suggest, maybe making like a bike passing lane or something like that, because I know everybody is like, you know, honk or say I'm passing on the left or right, and, you know, sometimes bikes can't get by because there's, you know, four or wider people on the bike pass. I think that's, so I understand. It's frustrating for both sides, you know, for the walkers and for the bikers and, you know, it's frustrating for everybody. So I think it's something, glad you mentioned it. So I'm sure you hear it all the time.
Well, that's why e-bikes are going to be such a problem, because they're much faster, and will make the path that much more crowded. That's what's driving the e-bike discussion.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you too for all the great work you do, because, you know, when you see a list like that, you understand the involvements in it, you realize what a fantastic community this is, with everybody pulling on the wagon and certainly in Parks and Rec. One comment struck me, though, and I think it was the last comment that dealt with working to preserve our lake shore. And I'm scratching my head and I'm saying, I think we own about ninety-five percent already. We just acquired Lighthouse Park, and we just acquired Clark's Landing a bit ago. Certainly great additions to lake shore. And in the not-too-distant future, we should certainly be acquiring also the BLP Chyris plant property when they finally tear down that redundant facility. So if anything, we are continuing to add more and more property to the actual lake shore. So I'm not seeing, I guess, the direction that your comment was taking.
I don't think you should read too much into it. It's more just, that may have been more my editorial that we need to make sure that the lake shore is developed for the benefit of the people in Marquette.
No, absolutely. Okay. Fine. Thank you.
Shouldn't take anything past that out of it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Kerry. Well, thank you very much for coming tonight and presenting. I mean, your advisory board adds value to the city. We have a large number of parks, a long shoreline, which makes for a lot of decision-making.
We couldn't do it without John and Andrew, though. I give them full credit.
I noticed when you first, you know, your first part of your presentation there, you mentioned four parks right off the top, and all four of those are being updated. So glad to see us going in that direction. So, hey, thank you very much. Okay, next we have one public hearing tonight. That public hearing concerns ordinance six-six-five, civil infraction fines and process and various amendments. City Clerk, could you please give us the background of that?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. Staff in the city clerk's office has been reviewing portions of the city code that relate to the city's business license processes, and has identified a number of sections in Chapter six, twelve, thirty-four, and thirty-five that should be amended. Chapter 6, 12, 34, and 35 that should be amended. Minor changes related to enforcement provisions, civil infraction fines, and the issuance of municipal civil infractions are also being recommended in Chapter 30, Article 2, Municipal Civil Infractions. Other suggested changes are related to sections that are outdated, redundant, or needlessly complicated, and are intended to make city business license regulations simpler for both the public to understand and for staff to enforce. Proposed changes will also standardize the language and regulations used throughout the code. These proposed changes have been discussed with staff from the Police Department, Fire Department, and the Community Development Department, as well with the City Treasurer and City Attorney. The city commission scheduled tonight's public hearing at the regular meeting held on April 30th. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt Ordinance Number 665, which would establish base civil infraction fines for the city, and a civil infraction process for business licenses, and make various minor changes. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to open this public hearing. First, I want to call in Deputy City Clerk Kyle Whitney to further clarify this.
Thank you, sir. So we know you guys see a fair number of proposed ordinances that come through. This one is thicker than most. And while the background that the city clerk read covered everything, we wanted to take an opportunity to just kind of explain the genesis of it and clarify where possible. Most of what you're going to see in this packet is clarifying, streamlining, but it's touching so much and it touches on so many chapters that it balloons to this many pages. So just by way of some real quick background, over the last couple of years, the city clerk's office has, our staff has been looking to simplify the business license process. We've developed new applications for people, and we've tried to standardize that process where possible. Over time and looking at the process, it's become clear that the staff time that goes into it, a lot of that isn't necessarily related to the processing, the accepting of applications, but is related to following up with non-compliance or contacting business owners who need a license. And there wasn't, it became clear there wasn't a uniform way to spur compliance within the boundaries of the code as it currently set. So what this does, and the reason this ordinance started, was this sets a baseline in the code, a uniform default schedule for civil infraction fines. So if a civil infraction is issued in the city, and the city code doesn't specify something different, it sets a standard fine, a standard sanction level for those civil infractions. To follow up on that, we then had to go into every article of the code that deals with a business license that our office issues, and we had to clarify that a violation of that article now represents a responsibility for a civil infraction under the code, because that also was not identified in a uniform way. So that explains why we opened every one of these chapters. And while we open these chapters, we don't get into them very often. There were updates that needed to be made, there were minor clerical changes, there was some streamlining. Sidewalks are mentioned because there was a sidewalk width mentioned, and recently, that section of the code was changed in a different meeting. So the idea was to just take these various sections of the code, make them all consistent, and make it simple for our office and for the rest of city staff, the Fire Department, Community Development Department that deals with some of these issues, and hopefully make it easier for the public to deal with our office as well. If you guys have specific questions, I can follow up as well.
We're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, if anyone wishes to address us on this item at the front podium, you have three minutes. We need your name and home address. Would anybody at this time care to address the commission? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close this public hearing. We would need a motion. Commissioner Plard.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt Ordinance Number 665, which would establish base civil infraction fines for the city, and a civil infraction process for business licenses, and make various minor changes.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Reynolds.
Second.
Comments, any?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank the city clerk's office. Great job, as always. Very, very good with details. Some of this is updating into basically the 21st century, and as Mr. Whitney mentioned, some of it is just conforming to what the commission has done recently. So it's something that needs to be done, and again, I thank the city clerk's office for being so diligent about keeping an eye on these ordinances.
Commissioner Reynolds, anything? Okay. Okay, this, because this ordinance requires a roll call vote. City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Fraser?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes. That carries seven zero. Next, we move to the consent agenda. Mr. Verito, you wish to speak to this? Huh? Mr. Verito.
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. At some point years back, this board stopped having the clerk read the consent agenda, despite requests to keep reading it so viewers know what's going on and to publicize any groups or organizations that appear. Also, the Arbor Day proclamation was handled as a proclamation, the way it's supposed to be, as a separate item. It reads in part, "Whereas the first Arbor Day celebration was held on April 10, 1872 through the efforts of J. Sterling Morton, who realized that trees beautified the countryside and helped reduce the erosion of precious topsoil, and whereas trees in our communities improved environmental quality, increased property values, enhanced the economic vitality of business areas, and improved our quality of life. And whereas the city of Marquette has recognized the value of trees in our community, and has adopted the U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement, which promotes urban forest restoration projects, and whereas because of Marquette's efforts to improve our community forest, the city has been named a Tree City, USA for 37 consecutive years. Now therefore, I, David J. Campana, Mayor of the city of Marquette, do hereby proclaim Friday, May 25, 2018, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations." End quote. At least twice after these endearing words were read, I reported to the effect that this board is the least likely entity who'd give a rip about any of that. Every year, this board destroys more trees than it plants under the guise that it cares about trees, all while Shyrus Park treesy rode away with no discussion of a long-term solution as recommended by both city management and public. This board cut a strip off the east edge of the Flounders Woodland, and once voted to ruin its most gorgeous section with a boathouse. An illegal clearcut occurred south of Shyrus Hill. This board answered by slapping the perpetrator on the wrist with a $500 fine, even voted to run water service to the parcel for a future development that thousands of us detest the site, the thought of. Then every tree was needlessly butchered at South Beach Park. Does any of that sound as if it's in line with the lie which this board refers to as an Arbor Day proclamation? Intact, undisturbed woodland holds soil in place better than planted trees and look more aesthetic. We are blessed to live in an area that is graced by forests. That's why Marquette remains a Tree City, not because this board adheres to the elements of an Arbor Day proclamation. In fact, this board's example directly opposes such philosophies, so much so that this board now hides our Arbor Day proclamation in the consent agenda, which they no longer read aloud in the interest of saving time and face.
We need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Would someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Fraser.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second the motion.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Posed. That carries seven zero. Next, we come to unfinished business, of which we have two items tonight. First is the travel lift lease agreement. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. Peter Fraser, Sr., requests the city commission consider renewing his lease for storing and operating the 35 BFM travel lift at Cinder Pond Marina. The lease has a term of five years, and the rent is proportionate to the number of vessels assisted. This item was reviewed on consent at the April 30, 2018, regular meeting. Fiscal effect, the Cinder Pond Marina will receive $20 per vessel that is 25 feet or longer, and $10 per vessel that is 25 feet in length. $920 was received for 2017. Recommendation, approve the lease agreement with Pete Fraser, Sr., to store and operate the 35 BFM travel lift at the Cinder Pond Marina, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Commissioner Fraser to abstain on this vote. He doesn't gain financially necessarily, but his father is involved in this, so can we agree to that?
Can I agree?
Agree. Good. Good. We need a motion. Commissioner Stonehouse.
I will motion to approve the lease agreement with Pete Fraser, Sr., storing and operating the 35 BFM travel lift at Cinder Pond Marina, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it.
Is there a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Comments, any?
Well, certainly, although the city really receives very little money from the lease, there's very little money involved in the whole operation, and it really should be viewed as a service provided to the voters, not only in the Marquette area, but for those folks passing through transients that may need that service for emergency purposes. So having it there is a real plus for the city of Marquette. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Posed. Abstaining. Six, zero, one. Our next unfinished business item of the evening is Superior Kayaking Company, the lease agreement. City Clerk, could we have that one, please?
Thank you, sir. Background. Staff advertised a request for proposals for operators of a sole concessionaire kayak guide service at Presque Isle Park. Superior Kayaking was the only proposal received. The Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee reviewed and recommended the proposal to the city commission at their April 11, 2018, meeting. Superior Kayaking successfully operated a kayak tour service at the park last year as a trial. That trial proposal was reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee, and the Harbor Advisory Committee, and was recommended unanimously by all in 2017. Superior Kayaking Company, LLC, has requested the city commission consider renewing their lease for parking and beach space at Presque Isle Park. The parking and section of beach is located near the Superior Watership Partnership Offices sea attached. It should be noted that the parking spaces are not exclusive to Superior Kayaking. Staff has worked with the city attorney and Superior Kayaking Company to draft a standard lease agreement which provides for the terms and conditions of the request. The monthly payment will be $147. The term of the lease is four months. This item was reviewed on consent at the April 30, 2018, regular meeting. Fiscal effect, the general fund will receive $588 in 2018 with approval of the lease agreement. Total revenue over the three-year term of the lease will be $1,764. Recommendation, approve the lease agreement with Superior Kayaking Company, LLC, for parking and beach space at Presque Isle Park for a period of four months at the rate of $147 per month, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Smith.
I move we approve the lease agreement with Superior Kayaking Company, LLC, for parking and beach space at Presque Isle Park for a period of four months at the rate of $147 per month, and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign it.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Fraser.
Second.
Comments?
I just wanted to add, it sounded like this group did something similar last year, and it was a success. And it's a service that I think folks enjoy using.
Thank you. Commissioner Fraser.
Another great service for the city that somebody else, and it's not their, anybody can still use the beach, the beach themselves, and it's just another way to view our lovely island, and for tourists and everything that want to visit the island, or take a view from the island, from the lake, I think it's a great idea. Worked out good last year.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Posed. That carries seven zero. Next, we come to new business. Under new business tonight, we have four items. The first item is a purchase request for city-owned property parcel 0510582. City Clerk, could you please give us the background on that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. Home Renewal Systems has presented the city manager with a letter of intent to purchase approximately 4.6 acres of city-owned property located at the northeast corner of Lake Shore Boulevard in US 41, commonly known as parcel two of Founder's Landing. The property is currently vacant, and the letter of intent expresses the developer's interest for a multi-use project consistent with the South Marquette Waterfront Form-Based Code and an anticipated $13 to $15 million worth of private investment. The developer intends to further the city's goal to create a strong connection between downtown and the South Marquette neighborhood, while respecting and enhancing public access to the waterfront through this potential development project. This property is in the South Marquette Waterfront Form District and is within two sub-districts, waterfront mixed use, and traditional neighborhood commercial residential. As with any property in the city of Marquette, any development would be subject to local zoning. For the provided resolution and city ordinance, the city manager is recommending the property sale be contingent upon an appraisal and local development agreement that outlines the investment and responsibilities for each party to the agreement. Fiscal effect, to be determined based upon appraisal of the land and any subsequent local development agreement. Recommendation, seek an appraisal for said property and adopt the resolution of intent to sell, which will provide direction for the city manager to begin negotiating the sale of the property, subject to conditions listed, and bring back the sale to the city commission for final approval. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. City Manager, we do have a couple people who want to speak to this. Did you want to go first, or you want to wait until they're done speaking?
I can just briefly begin. Back on April 12th, I received a letter from Home Renewal Systems, Jeffrey Katzen, who I believe is here tonight, showing or indicating interest in what we refer to as parcel number two of Founder's Landing. And this is the southernmost parcel on the east side of Lake Shore Boulevard. For general purposes, it's kitty corner from the Beeferoo. The property has been for sale since at least 2006, and I believe before that time, it was put on the market at that time by the existing city commission. And I invited HRS and Barry Polesen, their local representative, to be here tonight to speak to you, to give you an idea of what they have planned. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Verito, did you wish to speak to this?
Are you reading, or, well, the chairman is reading as I'm trying to start. Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. While this property was originally slated for development, too much of the view to the north has been blocked, not only for the residents who were lied to, but for the public in general. While this property was originally slated for development, too much of the view to the north has been blocked, not only for the residents who were lied to, but for the public in general. This board threw twelve years of planning out the window when its preferred developer arrived out of nowhere. I'm the first to agree that this site was more suitable for development than the parcels to the north on which hideously designed condos block our view from the roundabout. Now they've even ruined the view from the Father Marquette parking area. You've so blocked our view from the Founder's stretch of front street that the only portion you haven't blocked is the parcel under discussion tonight. And of course, you're destined to go for the extra mile like this board always does with no consideration of an adjacent land use, only based on who's who. So long as this board has bungled all the buildings there thus far, except for the hotel, how can we assume this site won't be bungled as well? With your Disneyland style of architecture and three-story buildings blocking our view that ought to have been two stories high? What has the developer planned for this site? Can our residents and visitors who love the lake, please have someplace along this entire stretch? And can more of the development at Founder's please be put to public use as originally proposed, other than a patio and one restaurant? Based upon your track record and the architects, this item should be out of their hands entirely.
Mr. Poleson, did you care to address?
Don't mean to be rude, but I think you'll see it on the camera here. My butt? Yeah, okay. Um, well, uh, as we mentioned and, uh, the mayor, our manager has mentioned, we, uh, HRS submitted a letter to purchase this property. Um, after the successful completion of the orphanage project, HRS, so, you know, brought their strength and experience as developer to town to actually tackle and finish that project. So they started asking, well, what, what else is available? I said, well, there's, I, we drove around town and looked at a number of pieces, uh, Cliff's Dows, some of the other woodlands areas, and, uh, and parcel two really captured Jeff's imagination and, uh, thought, wow, what a, what a great site. And, uh, so, and from my standpoint, it's the, 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 the three in the trilogy down there, so I'm, I'm excited to, uh, present a design here. What we, what we're going to show you here tonight is, is a concept. It's what we kind of are thinking will work and will do there. Obviously, after securing a property, there's a whole lot of due diligence that has to happen, uh, addressing the brownfield issues that are down there, setting up the whole development, the development agreement, um, so, but, but this is basically what we're proposing. And it's, um, what we're looking at is completely, uh, within, or it complies with the zoning ordinance. It's in, currently in place. And, uh, it meets the, the master plan, the intentions. It's always been conceived down here on the, on the site. So basically, parcel two is a very long site of the Bum's Beach over here. And contrary to what some things said, the Lake Shore Marquette is the public's Lake Shore. So you simply drive down Lake Shore, you have an uninterrupted view no matter where you are on it. So you get down to the dense urban part, which we had called parcel number three. So parcel two here, uh, is, it's been somewhat remediated. There's still less contamination in the ground. Certainly this will require to be a brownfield plan. It is currently in the Founder's Landing Brownfield District. So what we're proposing is a mixed-use development and the mixed, this zoning is called, uh, South Marquette, uh, mixed-use, something. And, uh, there is a small sliver that was mentioned that's a different zone. That's actually all taken up by easements, so we can actually build there anyways. So this is in full compliance with that zoning, uh, as written. And what we're proposing is, um, twenty-one townhouses. And these are, won't be like the condos. These will be very kind of like mid-range. These are targeted for, um, you know, just people who live and work in Marquette. They're not going to be as glamorous, not as high-end, but, uh, but just a real appropriate style. I like the stick of them is kind of, the, the houses in South Marquette are just nice, simple houses. These, the style of these, the look of these will capture that sort of feel. The other major component of the project is a hotel. And this would be, again, not a top star, um, hotel, but a kind of mid-range hotel. Service the community. Here, that's all right. Yeah. I have a neck issue, so if you're turning that way, it's hard. Yeah, it's fine. Uh, this'll work better. All right. So we're talking about a, yeah, it'd be a, a mid, mid-level hotel, fits on the property. The, uh, the zoning does allow for three-story buildings. Uh, we will, we will stay within that. The, of the bulk, there's a lot of the site. It's about forty percent of the site is actually taken up by easements. Main sewer lines, main power lines for the city run through the site. And that's pretty much all back here along the highway side. So we can park on it, but we can't build on it. So that's why the site lays out. Also, the form-based code requires that we build along the street and form a street space. So that's what we have, all the buildings kind of lined up along Lake Shore Boulevard, so. Um, the third, third area of this is down here on the, on the very south end where Lake Shore intersects the highway. And we're just having this as an outlet. It wouldn't, it don't have a, a business in mind yet, but it's just a good opportunity for some kind of a standalone business, whether it's office, food, or retail. It's just another opportunity that could go there. That's basically the concept.
Good. Thank you. Did Jeff, yes?
I just want to, um, just reiterate that we are very interested in this site. We were very pleased to finish up the grand view and very, very happy about the way that turned out. And, uh, want to do some more projects in the community.
Well, thank you. We had, we had good luck with Home Renewal Systems. They did a very good job on the orphanage and, so there's no doubt that you can do what you say you're going to do. So, um, well, first, you have more to say? No, that's it?
Just a few questions.
Okay. Well, this is very preliminary, so we understand that.
Yep.
Um, so at this point, we're going to ask for a motion. So who's going to make the motion? Commissioner Plard?
I move that we seek an appraisal for said property mentioned in the background of this, uh, ordinance and adopt the, or, I should say, in the background on this agenda item, and adopt the resolution to, of intent to sell, which will provide direction for the city manager to begin negotiating a sale of property, subject to the conditions listed, and bring back the sale to the City Commission for final approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, yeah, I agree with you, uh, in your comment when you said that, uh, the art, the results of the orphanage, we're very happy with that as well. Uh, very good job and, and you're proven to be able to do what you say you do, which of course is very important to us. And also in taking into consideration what the city manager mentioned, this property has been for sale for a long time. Uh, I think, I like the project personally. That's why I made the motion and I'm going to support it. I think it's a, it's a, it's a nice project that's going to help the city of Marquette in a lot of different ways.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel, anything?
Yeah. I, I'm excited about this opportunity. You know, I followed the orphanage from start to finish a couple times on the planning commission, different groups, and I'm glad that you guys were able to finally make that into something that, uh, is not just a vacant, uh, pigeon catcher anymore. You're gonna, you're really going to have your feet to the coals here. Community is going to be burning down our throats and right down yours. And I really hope that, uh, every step of the way that you work with, um, not just the, the city and the commission, but with the community and, and really take what their goals, I, I think for hopefully, if you got to downsize a little bit, whatever it might be. I'm not going to dictate any of this. I know it's very, very early in the process, but I just, this is a, this is an opportunity for us to really make great use out of that parcel. But at, at the same time, it's, from here on out, it's part of our history. And we need to respect that property for what it's worth, as much as, uh, as much as, you know, what's going to happen in forty years for my kids that are going to hopefully be around here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I would only remind people, uh, that this is the first step of a very long journey. This is going to be a long process. And, uh, you know, simply negotiating a sale and coming to the commission with a, with a potential sale as we've directed or have, as the motion will direct the manager to do, is really just step one. So it's, it's going to be a while. And, uh, I'm sure there'll be many opportunities for public input along the way, specifically and early on to the planning commission as they begin to look through the opportunities with it. I would also remind people again of what's that big thing we've got just to the south of this property? And that's the Shyrus BLP, right? That's the old power plant and that's going away. So this then makes this property much more attractive in terms of overall sightlines, what you're seeing, the experience of being on the lake shore, of experiencing and enjoying our waterfront that we all own. So I think it's a great thing and I certainly would support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier?
I think it's great, Barry, that you and, you know, the, you guys did a great job with the orphanage. I think it's great you brought a concept of your drawing and what you want to, what you're thinking about doing there. I think it's great because you've had other people come to us and ask about buying property. Has been, you know, accepted or not accepted because they didn't, they've said afterwards, oh, we have plans, but they didn't bring anything to us. So I'm glad you brought something to show us about what you're thinking about doing. Even if it's not concrete, it just says, well, we're thinking about doing this. I think it's great. You, you've got an idea of what you want to do. Maybe make some more, you know, some more public access. I think the hotel's a great idea because, you know, it's only, right now, there's only one hotel that faces the lake, you know, there's only a couple. So I think it's great to have extra place for people to stay when they come vacation here. To be able to see the lake and visit the lake. You know, and, and people can say all they want, you know, we get a lot of comments about we're driving along the bypass and not be able to see the lake, blocking buildings, something like that. Just think about that for a minute, but, I mean, you can still see the lake if you drive down Lake Shore. You can still drive through Founder's Landing and see as much lake as you want. You can drive all the way up to Prescott, see tons of lake. Those places see like, you know, and so it's unfortunate the other kind, but what they didn't consider when they built the other places is, you know, as a company I worked for did a lot of work down there before Founder's first started. And there's like six, eight feet of dirt down there. They had to build on top of the, kind of soil. So the buildings might be up to code, but they didn't consider the six, eight feet of dirt they built on top of, you know, to make it the site that's, you know, unfortunate. I see a lot of people here probably from out of town, driving to town and complaining about that, maybe to the lake. Well, don't go through the bypass, go through town. You'll see as much lake as you want. You'll see tons of lake, you know, and like it's great you do it, you're, use the property, increase the city tax base because, you know, everybody pays taxes, city, and the city might be hurting for taxes sooner or later. I think it's great to help all the city and create it with, you have great ideas and I think Barry did a good job designing it and I'd be looking forward to working with you.
Commissioner Smith?
I have a question. I'm wondering how much the townhomes will cost? Do you have an estimate of what those, the price range of those? You said mid-range, so.
Yeah, mid-range. We don't know. They won't be, it won't be, it'll be affordable for the average person. It won't be, it won't be low-end, but it won't be five, six hundred thousand dollars. But at that market that someone working in the area can be worried for.
And the reason I ask that is I, I come from the Housing Commission prior to serving on the City Commission, and I know there's a lack of, you know, low-end, but also mid-range housing choices in Marquette. So that's something I'm concerned about. Yeah, okay. I look forward to hearing more on that.
We don't know where it falls yet.
Yeah. Yeah. And I just wanted to say I, I do plan on voting yes tonight. However, I, I am interested to see how this progresses and just because I vote yes tonight doesn't mean that I'm going to approve the plan in the future. So, um, I understand this is the first step of many steps. I'm going to be asking a lot of questions along the way and I'm looking forward to seeing what you guys come up with.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Um, I'm just going to echo Commissioner Schlegel's comments. I've had a couple contacts about this property and I'm excited that we have a possibility of putting use to it. Um, we need things on the tax rolls, but just a reminder, as it's been said, is that the public is very protective of the lake shore, so there's going to be lots of questions and I, but I do know that Barry is good with this and I know that Home Renewal Systems, there's a good history, um, that we've started here, so I just look forward to working further with this project.
Thank you. This is not subsidized housing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good, good. I like the plan. I like that it's on the west side of the road. As always, this gives everybody in town the opportunity to see the lake, see the lake shore and to utilize it. Something's got to go there. This looks like a good plan. It's, it's a long way to go. Realizing, of course, that the people in the area are very sensitive to the lake shore and not losing it, but I don't think we will. They are very protective, as was mentioned. But I think you know that Barry's been here long enough to realize that. So this looks like a good plan, but this is only the start. Tonight, all we're voting on is getting an appraisal to see what it's worth and to give the city manager the opportunity to start negotiating. So a long way to go. Do you have any more comments? This will be a roll call vote. City Clerk, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes. Carries seven zero. Thank you. Next, we come to our second new business item of the evening, which is a notice of intent fiscal year twenty eighteen, capital improvement bonds. City Clerk, could you please give us some background on that?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. In order to start the process of issuing capital improvement bonds for fiscal year eighteen projects, a resolution must be approved that will authorize a notice of intent to be published. The notice of intent serves as a forty-five day referendum notice in accordance with Public Act thirty-four. This Public Act states that if ten percent of the registered electors of the city file a referendum petition within forty-five days of publication of the notice, then the bonds cannot be issued without voter approval. The resolution author, also authorizes that the city may reimburse itself for expenditures made prior to the actual issuance of the bonds. This language is needed in order to comply with federal tax laws for tax-exempt bonds. Projects proposed to be financed with this bond issue are attached. These are projects that have been budgeted and includes a brownfield authority project that would be paid by the Brownfield TIF capture. A final amount tally will be presented before the bonds are actually issued. Fiscal effect, a debt service schedule will be produced when the bonds are issued. Recommendation, approve a notice of intent resolution to issue and sell general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed four million, four million, seven hundred thousand dollars for capital improvements and authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. In order to make this all sound so simple, we have our chief financial officer, Gary Simpson. Gary, would you care to add some more information on this?
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly appreciate your confidence, but I'm probably going to leave everybody more confused than before I started. But, um, we're getting ready to start, uh, projects for this construction season. And in order to do so, we need to borrow roughly eight and a half million dollars to finance these projects. And these projects are already in the budget and they were approved. In fact, I think it was two or three meetings ago, we amended the CIP plan to accommodate the damage that was done October twenty-fourth at, uh, Shyrus Park. So that's part of this bond issue as well to, uh, help remediate some of that damage. And we're also out seeking grants to further develop that area, but that will probably be, uh, next year's budget. So what's a little different this time is, um, there are different debt limit caps that, that the state mandates. We're well under our overall debt limit. But the way we've been issuing bonds in the past few years are called capital improvement bonds. We're running up against the cap for capital improvement bonds. So the way we're going to have to finance this eight and a half million dollars, we'll have to get a little more creative. We do have some room under our CIP cap, which is what this first, first action is about. And that's going to, uh, finance, uh, mostly the general fund and the water and sewer portion. going to finance mostly the general fund and the water and sewer portion, and a little bit of the sidewalk portion of the projects. The next action, which is your next item on the agenda, we're gonna have to, for the Lighthouse Park, we're gonna issue those through a building authority bond. And then that also requires a notice of intent. And the remaining projects, which are basically the streets, the majority of the sidewalk, and also the stormwater bonds, will be issued under what is called MTF bonds, which will be financed through our Act 51 monies and our major and local street funds. Those bonds do not require a notice of intent, but there will be a resolution once we're ready to issue the bonds. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. We're basically, through these actions, we're looking to finance $8.5 million worth of projects, and it's just a little squirrely this time, because we have to do it in three different actions instead of one, which is what we've been doing the past few years. So clear as mud, I'm sure, but...
We all have it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We need a motion. Who would like to make a motion? Mr. Smith?
I move that we approve a notice of intent resolution to issue and sell general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $4,700,000 for capital improvements and authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution.
Thank you. We need a second. Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Commissioner Smith, anything? Commissioner Frazier, anything?
I think it's good we're getting some money to try and fix some projects, some stuff that got have by, ruined by the storms, some city projects we have to fix up. I think it's good that we're getting some money. Unfortunately, Gary's got a way to move the money around and make it good for the city. Thanks, Gary.
Any other comments? Pretty cut and dry. We do this every year at this time. This would be a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plord?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, carry 7-0. Next, we move to item number 13 on their new business. That is a notice of intent fiscal year 2018 building authority bonds for the Lighthouse Park. City Clerk, please give us some background.
Thank you, sir. Background, as part of the process of issuing bonds for the Lighthouse Park project, a resolution must be approved that will authorize a notice of intent to be published. The notice of intent serves as a 45-day referendum notice in accordance with Public Act 31 of 1948. This public act states that if 10% of registered electors of the city file a referendum petition within 45 days of publication of the notice, then the bonds cannot be issued without voter approval. The resolution also authorizes that the city will issue the bonds via the building authority in accordance with Public Act 31 of 1948. Fiscal effect, a debt service schedule will be produced when the bonds are issued. Recommendation, approve a resolution for building authority contract and notice of intent to issue and sell general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $1,200,000 for capital improvements at Lighthouse Park and authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson, anything you could add to this?
The one thing I would like to add, under the building authority bonds, because some of that property is planned to be used for like, I don't know, like a bed and breakfast type activity, that requires taxable bonds to be issued. So we're planning to do this whole million dollars under taxable bond issue. It's similar to the Hartwood Forest Land Bond. That was issued as taxable. Now, the difference is, back in the day when we issued the Heartland Bonds, there was about 100 basis points difference in the interest rate. So instead of being able to say, issue a bond at 4% interest, we had to issue it at 5%. And what that means is the person, the people buying the bonds were not able to claim that interest as tax-free. They had reported on their, their income taxes as receiving interest, and they had to pay taxes on it. So that's why there's usually a difference in the interest rates. With the new tax legislation that's been passed at the federal level, there's really not much an incentive for that. So the interest rates between the non-taxable and the taxable are very close now. We figured it out that if we were to issue a 15-year bond, we'd probably pay like $15,000 more total by doing it taxable. And also by doing it taxable, it gets, gives us maximum flexibility. We don't have to worry about, are the proceeds being used towards an area that's for public use only, or are we running into a gray area where maybe we're just gonna rent that off to where, you know, you have to pay like a lodging fee to stay there, and that's kinda what gets us into trouble. So this one will be a taxable bond, but because of the new tax rules, the interest rate, there won't be that big of a difference anymore, so...
Thank you. Who would care to make the motion? Commissioner Plord?
I move that we approve a resolution for a building authority contract and notice of intent to issue and sell general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $1.2 million for capital improvements at Lighthouse Park and authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Do you have any comments?
Thank you, Your Honor, just one. I have every confidence in what Gary Simpson does. There's nobody better than Gary Simpson. Continuously gets compliments. We continuously get compliments, City of Marquette, for the work that Gary does from all over the state. People refer to what Gary does, and I, and I think Gary, I don't know if you wanna mention this or not, but I think people call you and ask your advice on, you know, what do you do about this situation? And we appreciate that. So this is, this is a good project, and that's why I'm gonna support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Gary does know how to use money wisely. He's very good at moving money from place to place and getting bonds and doing stuff none of us can even figure out. He knows how to do it. Somehow, he can figure it out. I think it's great that we're using some money to improve the Lighthouse Park, so, I mean, make it more applicable for the public to go see and use and be more enjoyable for everybody. Make it, you know, a full Lighthouse Park, you know, it's still, still, you know, closed for now, but it's still gonna be more just a beautiful park when we're done. It's gonna be great for the tourism, for everybody to go see.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments? City Clerk, I believe we need a roll call vote on this?
You do, Mayor. Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plord?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Campana?
Yes. That passes 7-0. We come to our last new business item of the evening, which is the Prescotts Avenue reconstruction. Again, City Clerk, could you give us the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, the Prescotts Avenue reconstruction project includes road and utility reconstruction from a point north of Fair Avenue to Wright Street. All utilities as well, the size, as well as the sidewalk will be replaced in their entirety. The design for this project meets the requirements of the city masters, city's master plan for multimodal access. The concept was based upon recommendations from the Community Development Department, Public Works Department, and Northern Michigan University. The concept plans were approved by the Planning Commission at their January 9th, 2018 meeting. Bids for the project were opened on May 4th, 2018. Three contractors responded to our requests for bids. The results are summarized below. Hebert Construction, $2,894,176.15. Smith Construction, $2,939,886.65. And Overstar Construction, $2,967,023.95. Tabulation and checking of the bids found errors on the contractor's bids. Errors were mathematical and had no bearing on the final outcome. Fiscal effect, the Prescotts Avenue reconstruction project was approved under the fiscal year 2018 budget. Sufficient funds are able, available to cover the costs for this project. Recommendation, award a contract for the reconstruction project of Prescotts Avenue to Hebert Construction Co. in the amount of $2,894,176.15, based on the quantities and unit prices bid, and authorize the city manager to approve any unforeseen contingencies in an amount not to exceed 10% of the bid amount. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Okay, we would need a motion on this. Would someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we award a contract for the reconstruction of Prescotts Avenue to Hebert Construction Company in the amount of $2,894,176.15, based on the quantities and unit prices bid, and authorize the city manager to approve any unforeseen contingencies in an amount not to exceed 10% of the bid amount.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
Do you have any comments?
Well, my only comments is two things. One, obviously Prescotts needs to be reconstructed. I think that's clear for anybody that drives down it. Two, it's 200 less than what our engineers estimated, and even if adding in that 10% contingency, it's part, it fits our budget well.
Thank you. Mr. Schlegel?
Yeah, I just want to point out, I believe that these guys are the ones that did the roundabout at that intersection as well. I'll be at the work, I thought was great. Back when these projects came through the Planning Commission, it was brought up a couple of times that there was a lack of communication between the contractor and some of the local businesses around there, and I would just encourage that we follow up with the, and I'm saying, if they were gonna have a lane closure or something along that, they're supposed to give so much notice, so many hours, so many days. And I would just kind of reiterate that the fact that a number of business owners came in during the process of approving this through the Planning Commission process and were very adamant about making sure that the communication lines were completely open and allowing for business use, so. But it's great, great, can't wait to see this get done. Wow.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
I agree with Commissioner Schlegel that, you know, most of the business owners have, you know, asked about this process, and we said, our city manager told them, we will have access to all the business on there, one way or another. There'd be one street, one side at a time, but there will be access to a couple businesses on that street, and it'd be nice when it's all done. It's amazing to me how companies from out of town outbid local, we like to use local construction the best we can, but local contractors, of course, get outbid by other people, unfortunately, so it's just the way it works, and we have to follow the rules, but it's unfortunate that companies from out of town outbid, outbid local contractors all the time. It's unfortunate, but I think it'd be beautiful when it's done. The Prescotts Avenue needs to be redone. I think it'd be great when it's all done. Be great when it's done.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I guess I would like to make it very clear that the purpose of a street being repaved or rebuilt is not to make a pretty street. The purpose of that is to be able to provide the best access we can to all of our community members, business people, and the folks that live there. That's the reason the work is being done. And sometimes I think we put blinders on, and we, we ignore that along the building process. And I do remember the town of Menominee, Michigan, and when they redid their main drag going through Business 35 and literally shut off businesses. And how many died because they couldn't get access or people thought they couldn't get access? So perception can become as important as reality when you're dealing with this. And I'm certainly very hopeful that both the contractor and our engineering staff will make sure that that accessibility is always there for the project, so those people and the businesses can remain healthy and viable and functional and good taxpayers to the City of Marquette. We need to do that. We owe it to them. That's more important than just doing a nice and pretty street. It's keeping those businesses viable. And the same thing for the access to your home. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to add, but what was said on both sides of me, it's very important for these businesses not to suffer. No matter what you do, they're gonna suffer, they're gonna lose business. You just can't have this sort of disruption and expect nothing to go backwards. I hope that the city works with the contractor and that they work with these small businesses to make them as accessible as possible, because small businesses is what makes a community. And they, they are, they have a shoestring budget, and if, you know, a loss in revenue will hurt them. So it's very important that we speak to them and, and get their, you know, feelings on, you know, the best way to do this. Any other comments? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. Next, our last public comment of the evening. Again, the time for citizens to address the commission. I'm gonna open public comment. You have three minutes. We don't necessarily need your name if you've been up here before, but three minutes in front of us here. At this point, does anybody wish to address the commission?
Good evening. My name is Terry Tryne. I live at 804 Champion Street. I'm one of the overly sensitive southsiders that currently I open my window in the morning, and I'm able to look at the lake, watch oarboats in the evening. I don't have to jump in my car and drive to look at the lake. I open my window, and it's there. But the people to the left of me on that south side open their window to look at rainbow-colored buildings and their air conditioning units. And it's a sore topic on that end of town. It obviously matters, because the city is ready to reassess my property. And one of the first questions on the form, it asks if my property is lakeview. So apparently, that is something that matters. And I want the commissioners to really think about this. You have, on one hand, a large commodity that's going to raise the tax base in Marquette, and yet you have people who have paid taxes for years on the south side that are being cheated from something that they cherished and bought the property specifically for. I, I'm not, I'm not partial to my house, but I was when it was lakefront, and I could look at the lake every morning. So I understand where you're looking to raise tax revenue in the area, but I want you to know that nobody's gonna compensate me when I look out my window and I look at a three-story building. I'm concerned about the zoning that's on the south side. I don't know how it was ever approved to have three-story buildings there, but it's, it's really disappointing. And I'm hoping that you will take into consideration the regular taxpayers that have lived here 30, 40, 50 years paying taxes into the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Jeffaro, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. April 30th, Mr. Campana reminded us that members don't need to offer closing comments. He, like Mr. Plord, responded to other than what was said. Whether they must comment is irrelevant. My comment read, "If nothing worth their mention occurs over an entire meeting or the weeks between, they're encouraged to pursue different pastimes." That comment stands as stated. Even more telling was a response to the opponents of fluoride, including a doctor. Listen to what Mr. Campana said, quote, "Dentists are very smart people. They go to college for four years, and if they're lucky, they go to dental school. They pursue a degree. They work all day on teeth. They're smart people," end quote. We know that. We're adults. The speakers accounted for that. Little of his rebut addressed the public input. Pharmacists need extra schooling, too, but we've witnessed how that doesn't necessarily translate well to the wider realm of the real world. The chair also stressed that fluoride is natural occurring. So are an untold number of other organic substances that we wouldn't want in our water. He added, "Fluoride is used for phosphates and sodas and industrial uses." Well, most sodas aren't good for our health, nor is drinking most industrial ingredients." A woman rested her head in her hand, unable to believe what she was hearing as the chair talked around the issue. His response embarrassed us all. Incredibly, the chair's behavior fits the symptoms the doctor described of fluoride poisoning. poisoning with examples on record. April 30th, he took over a minute to jot my name next to two agenda items, missing what he needed to hear big time, so we'll have to endure it again. A recent article reported loud noise emanating from a new energy center even before it's fully throttled up. What do our energy plant, Lake Shore Site, and Flounders have in common? Residents were lied to in cases of utter betrayal. They were assured there'd be no noise issue with the plant, only to now say it sounds like a freight train. You blocked the rest of our Lakeview from the roundabout with Phase Four of your glitzy townhomes, ignoring years of common and plain as day evidence with no effort to lessen the impact, after this board assured nearby residents that their views wouldn't be blocked. Your larger building at Flounders is another lie. Height isn't the problem, nor the design unless that's changed. People are upset that there's no semblance of this promised retail transition from our shore to downtown. A similar lie occurred at Lake Shore Site where a fast talker promised to renovate the historic buildings and the shops and loft apartments. Now glitzy five-story eyesores are planned regardless of the 35-foot nationally recognized guideline, end quote. April 30th, the chair looked up for the last sentence only, and he exhibited similar ignorance tonight. What people are asked to remember him by is that he voted against closing public comment when the reasons for keeping it were plainer than day. His public orientation remains unacceptable.
Anyone else? Seeing no others, we're going to close public comment. We're going to go to comments from the commission. We'll start with Commissioner Schlegel.
Oh, mixing it up today. Where do I start? First of all, I'd like to just kind of go back to where we started the meeting and just thank everybody that has been, I think, doing a pretty good job of filling up a bunch of advisory board positions. I'm excited to see that, we need to get a couple of them shored up, especially the BCA. And I'll tell you, after a year and a half on there, it's not that demanding, but you learn a ton. And it's about politics that go on within the city, it's very important. So I would highly recommend, if anybody's looking for putting in a little bit of effort and giving back to the community, that would be a great community to be on. I'm actually, I'm not going to serve up a fat one to you here, Frank, but I'd like to challenge you to come up and say something good about the community that you live in at some point in time. And, you know, maybe, I'm not going to say one for one for the negative things that you point out, but I think it's important to actually recognize some of the good. Back in the day, my days in college, you and I threw a frisbee around down in the park for more than, more than one time. And, and I didn't think anything less of you, I thought you were a nice guy, but when I see all this negativity instead of any semblance of positivity or, or appreciation for where we live and the people that are running the show, it just kind of really surprises me. So I would encourage you to be a little bit more on the positive side. I don't mind listening to your comments, I think they're very valued, and, and lots of times, especially with the Arbor Day comments today, I wouldn't mind seeing that on, off of the, yeah, off of the consent agenda there, because over the years, I've planted thousands of trees with my family, and I take it very seriously that we have, have put back what we've taken out from harvesting for forest, whether it be for the use for firewood or habitat. So I came from a family that, that won a stewardship award that was very sought after and appreciated from the DNR back in the days, early days of forest management. We take that, our forest management and our, our habitat up here very seriously. And I know that this community does too, more than to the credit that you're willing to give them. So, other than that, I'd like to thank the city manager for getting us rolling on this sale of the process on parcel two, and the other ones as well that are throughout the community. I think that the plan that has been set forth is going to lead us in the right direction. We just got to make sure that we're working with these contractors and architects to do what's right for the community. Sorry to be so long-winded. I guess I had something to say tonight, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for taking too much time.
Always good to hear from you. Commissioner Frazier?
Well, I, I do support you, Dave, and all the stuff going on with the fluoride. I recently visited another country where you couldn't even drink the water or brush teeth the water, and the local people in town had to have little like storage units on top of their apartments and businesses just to have clean water to take showers with, and that, it's just awful. People kept talking about bad things with fluoride and all the stuff we do, but our, our water's pretty good. You could have it in a restaurant, you could drink it on the lake, you can do anything with that. It's perfectly good, you know, and there's mention of dentists say this, dentists say that. Well, I've talked to doctors too. I've talked to my family doctor, I've talked to neurologists, I've talked to lots of different doctors. There's studies out there by professional colleges, University of Michigan, that say fluoride is good. So you look in the internet, you can find anything. You can find all this bad stuff, all this good stuff, you can find anything you want. You want to hear somebody talk bad about Marquette, just come to our meeting. You want to hear good things about Marquette, talk to all of us. There's no, and some people commented that we don't enjoy nature. I think that's wrong because you don't know what we do in our special, I like to hike just as much as anybody else. I love going on our nature, go on hikes, and one of my relatives back in the day, Peter White planted trees up and down Lake Shore. So I shouldn't say we don't like trees, but, you know, we do like trees and, you know, I think it's wrong to say, and I understand what you're saying about South Marquette people not enjoying the view so much. I have friends in South Marquette, so I understand your points, and we're going to work with them through the process and try and make sure things don't, don't get blocked, at least try and, because there was another board to decide the other stuff. We're trying to do our best to take public comment as fact and see what we can do about keeping stuff under wraps and just work the best. What we have to do is help with tax base, we're going to lose the We Energies Plant, maybe use BLP plant, use a lot of tax base, and a lot of people comment, don't say the ban, I pay a lot in taxes, and some of the people that make a lot of comments may not pay much tax, if at all, you know, so the thing I would like to see is, say, I pay a lot in taxes, I have a right, just say whatever you want, you know, so. The other thing I want to say is, when I was in the country, everybody spoke of, what leaders do you have? We said, we have a leader that runs our, our city. They said, oh, we have leaders we pray to. I said, here's a little leader, Mr. Buddha, they call him, they prayed him out to him, so I figured I'd bring Buddha home. That way I can remember Mike wherever I go. I can always pray to Mike and know that Mike will be on call wherever I went. There you go, so, good luck to Mike.
Thank you. What's that thing worth? Commissioner Smith?
I wanted to say, the last meeting we had was on April 30th, which was, I think, our first nice weather day in Marquette. And since then, I've received a lot of questions and comments about the parks and when the restrooms would be opening and when the water fountains would be on. People that I interact with on a daily basis have a lot of toddlers, so those things matter to the people that I talk with. The Parks Department, I've been working with city manager, and they do the best they can. May 1st is the day when they start to at least try to get those things going. Still working on it, they've got over 14, and they're putting in a lot of hours, so wanted to give a shout out and appreciation to them, and looking forward to lots of time spent at the park this summer. That's all.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
A few things. Spent the last week traveling in Oregon. My wife and I try and get out and look at different areas of the country periodically, and, and one of the advantages of doing that is it gives you a sense of benchmarking. You're able to look at Marquette, and you're able to look at other communities that might be similar in size. And it's fascinating that the ones that are inland, many of them, are good vibrant communities with good vibrant downtown. Some of them I wish we could take home, they were really good. But when you get to the seacoast, which would be a better example of Marquette, you find that the lake shore is usually gone, or the ocean, the beach. It's tied up with big hotels, it's tied up with restaurants, and you don't have anything approaching the access that we have in Marquette. And while we might look at the access along Founder's Landing and say, look, you've only got from the road going to the, to the beach, to the, to the water, we really want to have all of this property, they don't even have that. And nothing, nothing they have really compares to what we have with Prescott of two and a half miles of literally open land. So again, it's, you've got to benchmark, you've got to see where you are in the greater scheme of life. And to the students we have in the audience tonight, I would request of you, when you have an opportunity, get out of Marquette. See the world, and then make a decision of what you want to do with your life. If you want to come back, you know where to come. But unless you have that opportunity of gaining experience other places, and not only the experiences that Commissioner Frazier talked about with a foreign country, but also just America, to see different places, different attitudes, different environments. You know, very often we're compared to Traverse City, and never in a good way, because nobody wants us to be Traverse City. And of course, that's never going to happen, that's just kind of a boogeyman. Traverse City became what it is because it was five hours away from Detroit. So people could leave the big city, get in the car, and by, by late Friday night, be at the vacation home. And then you've got the nonsense that we have there with no accessibility to water, big hotels, everything we don't want to be in that respect, Traverse City is. But I would point out in their favor, if you haven't been downtown Traverse City, and I mean the street off of the highway, you're missing something, because they do have a wonderful downtown. Let me segue then to water safety, because we, we did that with a proclamation, and it's important, and I think we may not have spent the time with that that we should have. About five, six years ago, we had a spade of deaths in Marquette from drowning. We had students, we had adults, we really went through maybe 45 people if memory survives, if memory serves me. And while much of that comes down to public, or rather personal responsibility, don't do stupid things, understand what you're doing. A lot of it simply also could have been solved by good education. And the city brought together a waterfront safety task force that was comprised not only of city residents but other folks from the area that really knew water safety and knew how to teach it and knew how to educate from it. Universities signed on board, the city signed on board, newspapers came on board with periodically providing little headlines and reminders for water safety. And that has been how Marquette, ever since, really has not had a single death, other than the last couple we had when the big storm came through, which I think was really a different situation. But now in the spring of the year, that water is cold, and that water is shocky. And what often can happen is literally death by cold. You hit that water, the impact on your body shuts you down, and it happens very rapidly. The Royal National Lifeboat Institute, which is in England and served for hundreds of years, makes that big point with everybody that uses the water of being aware and afraid of the cold. One little segue to something else. Parents, teach your children to swim. 75% of this world is water. No matter how protective you are, no matter how you think you can save your child, it's water. They better be able to swim. And I don't mean at age 15. I mean as soon as you can get them into the program of the YMCA where they can teach survival swimming, teach being able to handle yourself in the water, I think you need to do that for their own protection. Lastly, I promise, we authorize the city manager to go into discussions on land purchase for parcel two. That is the beginning of a very long process, and it will have public input along every step of the way, and we certainly need to be very sensitive to what it is, what is built and how it is built. And that, that can't be something that we lose focus on. No promises made, because we don't know where the journey leads, but we do need to bear that in mind. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Plord?
I just want to let people know that I also am a commissioner who wants to preserve the lake shore for the city. I value that lake shore as much as everybody else does, and we're going to be tasked with repairing and moving Lake Shore Boulevard probably this year, if not this year, it'll be next year. And we've had some, you know, I've had a lot of thoughts about that, and I don't want anything between the road and the lake shore at all, so I'll go on record saying that. Also, want to let Mr. Verito know, you challenged me last week, or last meeting, to tell you more about what people who speak to me say, because we say it all the time. People do send us emails, they do call us, they do stop us on the street. And when I did that, you obviously took the criticism personal and demonstrated tonight that you can't take the criticism any better than you think we can. You spoke of cherry picking, nobody does that better than you do. You did exactly that when you took Mayor Campana's comments right out of context, what it had to do with fluoride. Did a great job with that. You also, people want to know, you, you said you, you are looking to hold this board accountable. People want to know how you expect to do that. For example, you make comments all the time about this board did this, this board did that, but then you speak about something that was done in like 2009. That's kind of like criticizing President Trump for something President Nixon did. As a matter of fact, that's what one of the people that stopped me on the street told me and asked me to tell you, so I am doing that right now. Another thing people want to know is, why don't you understand there's no such thing as Flounder's Landing in the city of Marquette? They, they don't understand where you're coming from on that. And if you are referring actually to Founder's Landing, they're asking you to stop that, because they feel insulted when you do that. You're gaining nothing with people when you do that. So that's why people don't understand what it is you're trying to accomplish, getting back to what Commissioner Schlegel said. A lot of people, most everybody that I talk to really do like what, what's going on in the city of Marquette. Why don't you have more positive things to say? I'll tell you why, because you don't focus on that. And I'll also tell you why you go back to other boards, because if you can't find enough to criticize us about, you'll go back and criticize us about what other boards do. For example, and you did it again today, when you talked about the condos that were built right next to the highway. I had nothing to do with that, absolutely nothing whatsoever. I don't know of anybody else on this board that had anything to do with that. Why even talk about it that way? Don't understand it. So that's what we mean when, what I, what I mean when I say, don't understand what you're trying to accomplish. Still don't. Still don't understand you at all. Beyond all that, glad that the warm weather is here, glad that the parks are opening up, and people may be jumping again a little bit, as Commissioner Smith had mentioned. I know a lot of people want to use the parks, and the city's working on it. The water's going to be on, the, the restrooms will be open, the water will be on, we're doing, we're doing, they're doing a good job with that. So glad to see the warm weather though, like everybody else is, looking forward to the softball games and everything else going out at the parks. Also want to put a shout out too, glad we had a proclamation about public, our public works. In my time on the commission, what I've found with all the public departments, we, the people do an exemplary job, and I want to thank everyone for that. People work hard, and they really, really want to do a good job. Chief, your department, absolutely second to none. Really, really good. The fire department also, very, very, very good. And I can think I have a little bit of authority to talk about the police department, because I come from a law enforcement background, so I have an understanding about what they're doing and what they're trying to accomplish. When I see your, when I see your officers on the middle of the street directing traffic, for example, that's going to happen for 4th of July fireworks, what a job, what a job they do, and then just so much, so many other good jobs that they do in this, in the city. So I really, really was glad to see the proclamation for public works and tipping the hat to them and doing a great job, the great job that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
Well, two topics tonight. One, just as to all of us have talked about founders. Terry, we are listening, we are going to be paying attention to this project, and I can guarantee that it's going to be a slow process, and, but I'm glad that we're looking at something. Two, the second part I found interesting is Commissioner Stonehouse. I had my best friend graduated from nursing school this weekend, and her family's from the Carolinas, Texas, Florida, Oregon, there was one more I'm missing, California. And so they all came into town for three days, and they just traveled around Marquette by themselves, because I was busy planning this graduation party. And finally, the graduation night, all they did was talk about how beautiful Prescott was, how they could walk down the beach and not be screamed at because they're walking on someone else's beach. So I found that to be interesting, all these people coming from the coastland areas too, I mean California, the Carolinas, Florida, coming to Marquette, they've never been, and how great of an experience they had here, so that's just second to what you said.
Thank you. There are a lot of residents who are a little upset with the proposed development going in the city that were, you know, going to be taking away site and, we're not taking away access, but they just don't like the fact that buildings are going up. We, you have to realize, the city, and we've repeated this numerous, numerous times, we're losing our biggest taxpayer, which is Prescott Power Plant. They were good for between 1.2 to 1.6 million dollars a year. That's going away, we're not, we have to replace that somehow, otherwise services go away for the city. Your streets won't get plowed, they won't get fixed. So it's important that we, the city has land to sell, and we're going to encourage development. Yes, that'll help the tax base, but if you lose- Yes, that'll help the taxpayers, but if you lose something, you got to gain it back and that, and that's what we're doing. I would also like to mention, don't forget, next Monday, the Public Works, the new building off of Wright Street, it's an open house from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Might be your last chance to go see it. And our meeting next week, or next, our next meeting will be on a Tuesday, the day after Memorial Day. Correct? Okay. So I got, city manager.
Well, I got a few things, sorry. I'll start with the small. Thank you for supporting the motion to put that property up for sale or at least letting me discuss the sale of that property. And Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned, I think as a, as a manager, that it's important that we take advantage of these properties that we have available for sale. Not many communities have property like this, and I'm speaking of Founder's, I'm speaking of Cliff's Dow and a little bit of the Hartwood property. You know, they have the ability to sell such property and it is valuable property and it can easily be turned into tax-producing property that I think generations from now, people will appreciate the actions that we take. Moving on, couple of small things. City Hall renovation is taking, is taking a turn. The north side of the building is complete, the furniture's being moved in today. You'll see shortly, things transfer and the south side of the building will start construction within the next couple of weeks. So if you're out there planning on coming to City Hall, you'll see a little different configuration of the walls, but hopefully no, no place for you to get lost. I want to mention, and I don't, I don't recall if it happened prior to our last meeting, but we had a patrol car that was in a serious accident a few weeks ago on County Road 553 and one of our officers, Jackie Sweeney, Sergeant Jackie Sweeney, was seriously injured in that accident while the other party was, was killed. And I, I just want to mention that Officer, or Sergeant Sweeney is still in the hospital. She sustained some significant injuries and is being treated and I'd like you just to keep her in your thoughts while we, as she recovers. Moving on to rubbish. We have a, we've had a change in recent months that's related to the property sales plans that we have, and that was moving the rubbish drop-off site from the Cliff's Dow site on Lake Shore Boulevard to the Flink Farm site on McCollum Avenue near Pioneer Road. The only thing that's really changed is the site. We have, without going into too much detail, we have a permit to allow up to 200 cubic yards of rubbish per day to be collected. That's totaled. That means you can't, you can get 200 yards on the, on the property and you can't take 100 yards off and then put another 200 yards in. I mean, you, you're only allowed 200 yards a day. Without going into too much detail, we were, I should say, somewhat flexible with that at the Cliff's Dow site. We opened up the, when we opened up the Flink Farm site, the DEQ was very specific to us that we will not exceed the 200 cubic yards per day. And when we opened up the site for the first day on Saturday, we had a lot of people in line, about three hours, four hours set aside and about an hour and a half into it, the place was full. I have no real complaints or concerns about people having the right to drop stuff off, but I'm going to ask for a little patience and a little consideration from the public when we talk about volumes. Right now, we have limits on what you can bring. We've been somewhat lax in that enforcement over the course of the last few years. The limits pertain to one pickup truck or one trailer per load. Often, people bring more than that. We've been somewhat generous in, in the years past to allow that to happen, but obviously it backfired on us this time around. We're also going to take steps to make sure as best we can that people are bringing household rubbish. We've run into problems with, for example, remodeling jobs. People will often, or I shouldn't say often, but every once in a while, they will remodel a room, a bathroom, for example, put the remodeling, the, the rubbish from the remodel, the walls, the toilets, the sinks, whatever comes out of it, and wait for the opportunity to drop it off at the rubbish site as opposed to disposing of it through the contractor or through the waste management. This site was not intended for that purpose, was more intended for people who clean their house or clean out their basement or clean out their garage or that kind of thing. So we're going to watch that a little bit closer. That said, the only other option we have is to create more opportunities for drop-off. Right now, we do one Saturday a month and every Monday for rubbish. Compost is Tuesdays and Thursdays, I think, so we try to split those days up, but the compost days aren't as heavy as the rubbish days. So we're going to add, at least for the time being, Wednesdays every week, Monday and Wednesday every week for rubbish drop-off between 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM. It doesn't necessarily take care of the immediate problem of too many people showing up in one day. However, it will give you the opportunity to come back within a few days if you can't get there on the day that you want, or maybe to consider spreading your time out over the course of a week. So it's, it's, in order to be successful at this, in order to, in order to fix what we have as a problem, we need to, I need to ask the public for their patience and, and to give some thought and to, and to help us deal with this because we are guided, we are controlled by permits. We try to do the best that we can, we try to make as easy, as easy as we can for everybody and to accommodate everybody, but it's become obvious that we're not going to be able to do that to the extent that maybe everybody wants us to or we, we really want to. So I'm hoping that as we get past this initial rush of last Saturday, today, and then Wednesday, that the volumes will go down or at least spread out over the course of a week as opposed to just, just all on one day. I'm open to suggestions, but given the permits that we have, our, our options are, are limited. So unless you have any questions, commissioners, it's the information I have. Certainly, if anybody has any concerns, please give me a call. I'll try to deal with it as best we can, keeping in mind that, you know, we want you to be, get rid of your stuff too. So we're not happy unless you're happy. Thank you.
We are adjourned.